Welcome to the May 29, 2012 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members.
Council members Friedman?
Here.
Menuchyan?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Mayor Quintero?
Here.
The flag salute this evening will be led by Councilmember Menuchyan and the invocation by the Reverend Skip Linderman from La Canada Congregational Church.
Please join me in the salute to our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
(inaudible) the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Oh God, we ask your blessing on our meeting this night. Help us to listen and to discuss in good faith as we do the people's business. Grant that what we decide be for the greater good of all our community, especially for the most vulnerable. Thank you for the trust the people have placed in us. Help us always to be worthy of that sacred trust. Amen.
Mr. Kasakian, may we have your report?
Agenda for the May 29, 2012 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, May 24, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Uh, next at 3A is agenda preview for the meetings of June 5, 2012.
Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the June 5, 2012 meetings, we have no Glendale Housing Authority or Successor Agency business agenda items. We do have a City Council and Glendale Successor Agency meeting to commence at 3:00 PM. Director of Community Development, this is the downtown Glendale Community Benefit District petition phase. And secondly, we have Community, um, Director of Community Development again, and these are the deal points of the Lemley Theater, and that will be coming forward next week, too. That afternoon, we also have a special meeting, this is the Director of Administrative Services Finance regarding budget study session for fiscal year 2012-13 supplemental budget discussion. For the evening, for the Glendale City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items, Director of Public Works, the Glendale Freeway Ramp Liter Removal and Disposal Program, interim General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Extension of Service Authorization Agreement with CSGI Systems, Director of Community Development, this is the Alex Regional Theater Third Quarter Report from the Glendale Arts for the period of January 1 through March 31 of 2012. Under action items, we have Director of Public Works, public auction of city-owned properties located at 765 Glenmore Boulevard and 1652 Gladys Drive. Also Director of Public Works, this is a public auction, um, city-owned properties, and these are properties located at 749 Glenmore Boulevard and 1644 Gladys Drive, as well as 1648 Gladys Drive. Another item under action items, Director of Community Development, digital billboard signs. And lastly, we have a hearing, this is Director of Public Works, this is regarding authorization to vacate portions of San Fernando Road and Pacific Avenue, and this is vacation case numbers 165V and 166V. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next, please.
Next at 3B is a presentation, APPA recognition to Glendale Water and Power as being a platinum RP3 utility.
Okay, I have the plaque, beautiful plaque, actually. RP3, Reliable Public Power Provider, Glendale Water and Power, Glendale, California, Platinum Member, May 2012 to April 2014, and I'll have this. Plaque.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members. We're actually presenting it to you guys.
How did he get it?
To let him know that's an appreciation.
Okay, I'll give it to you, and I'll stand here, I'll pretend I haven't seen it. Obviously, everyone deserves it, but especially, obviously, the employees of Glendale Water and Power.
We just generate hot air up there.
That's right.
This is electricity.
Said it, I've said it many times. If we had turbines in front of this dais, we'd be in great shape, we'd power the overhead lights. Go ahead, Ramon.
Okay. I apologize for that little confusion, but I just want to bring you to your attention the work that we do regarding the RP3 program by APPA. This is the second time that Glendale's receiving this award. The first time we received the award was back in 2010, if you recall. And this is basically a recognition by APPA on public utility providers that able them, that's able to demonstrate proficiency in four different areas. And those areas, as you can see, are safety, reliability, system improvement, and workforce development. The main thing about safety, they look at our safety program, safety manual, and whether or not we have support by city management in terms of keeping the workers safe, as well as recognition for safe work practices. Oops, can you go back? Back, please. Back, there. And, um, and the other categories are reliability, where they look at, um, the outage indices and how well we meet our compliance requirements with NERC, in terms of not only for keeping the lights on, but as well as the cybersecurity requirements that's becoming a major issue for the industry. As far as system improvement, they look at two areas, whether or not we are committing into making improvements into our infrastructure, that we're continuously doing capital improvements, and our participation in our research and development. Last but not least is workforce development, where they look at areas on whether or not we're providing adequate training for employees. We have good workforce education, and that we are looking at succession planning and good recruitment program. The one item, workforce community participation, or participation in industry committees, is where, uh, by the way, we got 98 points out of 100, we got deducted 2 points from this area of participation to in the industry committees. Because of our budget situation, we cut down our participation last year. We had a perfect score 2 years ago, we went through it, but because of our lack of partic- or reduced participation, they dot us 2 points. We were really hoping to get the diamond level recognition this year, but we're not able to do so. So, next, I think. So, just to give you the importance of this, there were 94 recognized this year out of 2,000, a total of 176 for the last 2 years, so there were one of the few that goes through this process. And, um, this, this is based on sound business practices on those 4 areas that I mentioned about, and that we're able to demonstrate a utility-wide commitment to both safe and reliable delivery of electricity. And why do we do this? One of the benefits of getting an RP3 recognition is being able to be recognized by the rating agency, and we believe this will help improve our ratings, or non-maintained. Cost savings and workers' compensation insurance by providing a safe work environment. And the least of them, but I think equally important, is we get recognized nationally as a safe and reliable utility. And this also demonstrates the hard work and dedication that our staff have in keeping the lights on in Glendale. So, with that, I present the plaque to you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your support. Appreciate it. Well, like I say, it's the employees of Glendale Water and Power and all the employees of the city that constantly receive these awards, and there's a reason for it. Okay, next, Mr. Kasakian.
From the Korea Glendale Sister City Association, and on behalf of the association, Alex Wu is here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers. How are you? Um, this evening I have the pleasure of presenting to you 10 great students that we had the opportunity of taking to Korea on a cultural exchange program. We had an opportunity to visit 3 sister cities that we have currently in Korea. We had visited them, and we were able to stay with the host family, so that these kids were able to really dive into the daily lives of the Korean students, where they were attending class, and their school settings, and living with them. So they were able to really get entrenched into the daily life of the Korean students. And, um, just wanted to take this opportunity to present the students to you. If I could have the students come up here? And if I could just share with you briefly as to how the students were selected. We had an essay writing contest, so it ran for about 2 weeks, within that duration, we had about 51 applicants. So the students that's going to be standing behind me here are the 10 top students that we had selected. We felt that these students needed to be a great ambassador of GUSD, and also for the city of Glendale, and we definitely know that these will be the great leaders of tomorrow. And their writing proficiency is impeccable, and that's a testament to the level of education that these students get through GUSD, so we just wanted to have them to come, and just to say thank you for your support for our program, and our organization would like to envision this program being something that we could kind of do on an annual basis. So, we're currently in the works of trying to make that happen with our counterparts in Korea, so hopefully, we'll be able to come before you again to get your support and just, um, and have more students up here. And I truly think that these are the leaders of tomorrow. So, I'm going to turn over the mic to the students and have them come up individually, state their name and their school they attend and their grade level.
Good idea. Alex.
Hello, my name is Alexis Pinal, I attend Rosemont Middle School, and I'm an 8th grader.
Hello, my name is Ashley Kim, I'm a 7th grader in Rosemont Middle School.
Hi, my name's Janine Lagman, and I'm an 8th grade attending Wilson Middle School.
I know, so, Cho Yoon-hyung, Trevor Yoon-hyung, that means in Korean, I mean, Korean, yeah. Hello, my name is Trevor Kee-Faiver, I am a 7th grader, and I go to Wilson Middle School.
Hi, my name is Amy Lavor, and I go to Rosemont Middle School, and I'm an 8th grade.
Hi, my name is Esther Kim, and I am a 7th grader attending Wilson Middle School.
Hello, my name is Brendan Kaver, and I'm a 7th grader at Rosemont Middle School.
Hello, my name is Johann Park, and I'm a 7th grader attending Rosemont Middle School.
Hi, I'm Wade King, and I'm an 8th grader attending Wilson Middle School.
Well, I want to start by apologizing. I was scheduled to go to your event there at the country club, and at the last minute, I couldn't, I couldn't make it, so, uh, I'm very happy to see you. I want to thank Alex for everything that he's done, and the whole Korean Sister City Organization that really spends a lot of time and effort on the different programs that they do, so, thank you very much. Ms. Friedman, I know you were there.
I was there right before they were, and was, were able to prime the students, because I visited the schools that you visited, so I was able to kind of set it, set the stage for your arrival. And they were so excited to be able to welcome you to their country, into their classrooms and their homes. It was my pleasure to attend your going away dinner and your coming home dinner, and just in that short amount of time, I really saw a transformation in all of you. At the beginning, we got to hear some of your essays about what you were, um, what you were looking for when going to Korea and what you were expecting, and I was able to read some of those. And coming back, just to see how you had grown and what you had learned, and how you were surprised by some things, and some things were reinforced, and hearing all of your stories and seeing those amazing photographs was really, was really wonderful. I, I know that this is an experience that you're always going to remember, and something that I know from hearing you talk about it has changed all of you in a lot of ways. And I really want to thank the Sister City Association, Alex, and to Chang Lee for making this possible. It's a great gift for our students, and I'm very excited to hear that you're planning on trying to do this year after year. And when I was in Korea, and by the way, it was also at the expense and the effort of the Korean Sister City Association, um, we spoke to some high schools who were very interested, and middle schools, in doing real exchange programs for an entire semester. So I hope that that's something that you can put together, because I know that that would be an incredible experience, and maybe some of you even, when you get into high school, would want to do that. So, um, so thank you all for coming, and thank you for going to Korea and being brave enough to want to do that. And thanks also to the parents for trusting your, your kids with this program. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, um, just to touch on that, we are currently in the works of working out an actual sister city or a cultural exchange program with the schools in Korea, so hopefully, we'll be able to get that, uh, in the works and get it going, so. And if I could just trouble you, the mayor and the council members, to come down to the floor and then, so, take a picture with the students.
They thought you'd never ask.
Better, no, no, better, yet, let them come here.
Okay, that'd be awesome.
Thank you.
Stand behind your favorite council member.
No hand gestures, no hand gestures. You can move in here.
Tell us if you need us to move over.
One, two, three.
Of course, one of you could take a picture and share it, no, I'm kidding. We've got, for those, for the people at home, there's about 20 parents up here all taking pictures.
And I want to thank Alex Wu, this isn't the only thing he does here in the city of Glendale. He's also a commissioner and very active here in the city of Glendale.
Between he and Chang Lee.
Yeah, him and Chang Lee, that's right. Okay, next, please.
Next is consent items, I'm sorry, City Council and staff comments.
Actually, before we go to that, I think this might be an appropriate, um, time to present, uh, the city manager's, uh, selection of Steve Zern as the interim director of Glendale Water and Power. Do we need a motion for this?
I'll move, I'll move to appoint him.
We have a motion in a second, but we, before we do, we need comments and...
From the victim.
All right. Well, I was thinking first the city council, and then we'll go to the, but, well, let me start. I have full confidence in Steve Zern, I've known him for many, many years before he was even close to being a, um, he was even close to being a director of any sort, and I have the utmost confidence in him. He's an excellent manager, knows how to handle people, he is, as they say, firm but fair, and technically proficient, and above all else, in addition to his master's degree in public administration, he actually started his academic career by receiving a degree in political science from UCLA. That's a scholar, ladies and gentlemen.
Hey, come on, his wife works at UCLA.
So anyway, I'm very confident in his abilities, and I'm very happy that the city manager chose to move him into this spot. Other comments?
I'll second that, I think Steve has demonstrated over many years that I've worked with him, and he's worked with the community that he's capable of managing, one of the biggest departments in the, in the, in the city, and I am confident that he will do a great job with, uh, with, with the big tasks where, big tasks were entrusted in him, so, uh, we are expecting quite a bit from him, and, uh, and I'm sure that he will meet, he will meet those expectations, so, good luck.
Zern, I mean, Mr. Weaver.
Steve, you're always so sweet and nice to us, you know? It lies at point that he's going to be a very tough interim Water and Power Director. All my years on council, whenever you've been here, you're so totally prepared, whatever subject matter that you have. I almost thought you were controlling person, but it's not that. You just want to be informed on every subject and down to the nats eye, and that's very appreciated, shows every time you're here, so, I wish you the very best, young man.
All right, Ms. Najarian?
Steve, you've done a great job at Public Works, I've worked very closely with you in transportation issues in Glendale, and we've actually gone outside our city, too, and we work with other agencies, and I know you're going to bring that expertise and sensitivity to the GWP and make all of our ratepayers proud.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Menuchyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have just one question. We never have the Water and Power Directors sitting here, are we going to change that now?
He is from UCLA, so we may.
I see. I mean, can he go home on Tuesday nights now?
I think he should, he should maintain, not, canceling his Tuesday night plans. Steve is well-suited for this.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I wasn't planning to go home any night. I have a lot of work to do, so.
Very true.
Thank you very much, Stephen, congratulations to you. Okay, next?
Are there any others, is there City Council and staff comments?
I attended, uh, all 3, as far as I know, 3 memorial ceremonies yesterday up in Montrose, in Glendale, and at Forest Lawn. I want to thank all the organizations that worked hard to put these, to put these events together. They're one of the most important events that everyone should attend annually. I want to thank them for their organization, and, uh, it was a great day, I got a little sunburnt, next time I'll have to take a hat out with me, but, uh, I want to thank everyone that came out as well. There was, all the events were well-attended, and it says volumes to the respect we have to those who have paid with their lives for us to be free for this country, so, it was, it was, they were great events, and I was proud to be a part of it.
I'd like to echo Mr. Menuchyan's comments, to congratulate particularly the Montrose Perdugo Chamber of Commerce for their event, which was wonderful, and the biggest crowd I've ever seen up there, and also the Glendale Chamber for the event here at City Hall. I wasn't able to attend the Forest Lawn event, but they always do a really amazing memorial event, so, congratulations to everybody. I'd like to thank the Sir Optimists of Glendale for inviting me to speak last week, it was a pleasure to speak with them. Last week, some of you also may have attended the farewell party, which was open to the public for Camille Levy, who has been for several years now the very beloved leader of Glendale Healthy Kids. She's leaving for greener pastures, unfortunately, but it's really a testament to her effectiveness and to what she's done for the community and for the children of Glendale, that the venue, which was the Wine Cave in Montrose, was packed to capacity, and people were spilling out the front. So, thanks to the Wine Cave, and goodbye, Camille, we're going to miss you. And lastly, the Far North Glendale Homeowners Group had a meeting, I think it was their quarterly meeting, and our city manager, Scott Achoa, spoke, and I came to heckle, and he did about a very good job, and they asked very insightful questions, very interesting questions, so I'd like to thank all of them for their work in putting that forum on for members of the Far North community. Thank you very much.
Yeah, y'all, Mr. Weaver?
I just remembered one announcement. This Saturday and Sunday, the Montrose Arts and Crafts Festival is being held, starting at 10:00. And I've attended them all, and I've attended other arts and crafts festivals, but I think Montrose has probably the best, they always turn array applicants, I've worked the shows many times, they have 350 to 400 booths up there, one-of-a-kind items, and you can Christmas shop early, get your spouse or something gift that they're not going to see in any store, so, get there early because it turns into a real mob scene and a parking nightmare. Thank you.
Okay, I also want to thank, I attended the 3 commemoration events, and want to thank the different sponsors that put these together, and it is uplifting, especially when you go up to Montrose early in the morning and park my car, and I look up, and it's just packed with people, so. We also had a very nice turnout here at the city, at our Veterans Memorial, and then at Forest Lawn was huge. And I did announce that we have approved the 44-unit Veterans Housing Project, which is on Salem, about a half a block from Clancy's, and that was very well-received. The project will be for older vets, returning vets, their families, so it'd be well-subscribed, I'm sure, and we're also going to have New Directions, which is a social service organization that will help with some of the consoling efforts and placements and so forth. And then I also attended the Glendale, the North Glendale, Far North Glendale Homeowners Association, where, uh, the city manager took heavy questions, heavy questions, and managed to answer every last one of them, and gave those residents an idea of what it is that he sees in terms of the city needs, goals, and so forth, so I did a very good job. That's it, next, please.
Next is a consent calendar, including minutes, following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Okay, I have a card, so we need to pull 5C.
Move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Menuchyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
So you read 5C into the record.
5C is Director of Administrative Services Finance regarding increase to contract with independent accounting firm. C1 is a motion approving a 2-year contract extension with McGladory and Poland LLP and adding $311,902 to the original contract amount, including a $14,852 contingency.
Actually, I was going to let the speaker, Herbert Malino?
Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council and staff, my name is Herbert Malino. If we recall, many of the abuses that have occurred nationally with regard to major corporate entities, what we have found is oftentimes a very cozy relationship, or a very comfortable relationship, between the audited firm and the corporation or the organization that needed to be audited. I think that there is essential that there be a true arms-length agreement between an audited firm and the organization they audit. It is my suggestion that the city should change auditors every 3 to 5 years. You need to have individuals who come in and feel that they are going to be able to look at fresh eyes at different issues that maybe others have brought to the attention of the city council or the auditing committee. I have several issues that I brought before the auditing committee that I think need a fresh set of opinions. The primary one that I have is with the issue of the notes to the financial statements. For many years, I took the information on the notes of the financial statements that gave us a projection of the future, future obligation with regard to the pension debt. And because I use that data very frequently and use it in public before the council, I think that there was probably a mandate from the city manager to the auditors to basically have that particular section removed and basically displayed. Now, that's my opinion with regard to that. That is one of the most essential figures and pieces of information that financial statements should state. What is the future obligation with regard to the bonds, which is an excessively significant amount for the city of Glendale. I have other issues as well with regard to the movement, for example, the paramedic EMS from enterprise funds to special revenue funds to another fund and so forth, so there's a lack of consistency with that. I have problems with regard to the, uh, the Glendale Water and Power allocations. I think that the auditor should be able to look at how the city complies with its own charter and with the issues of the Glendale Water and Power transfers. I think that there is a significant amount of independence that we should expect from any audited firm, and it is my suggestion that even though McGladory has had several years of experience working with the city of Glendale, before that, we had a few years with another firm, that you look again at perhaps finding another firm... with another firm, that you look again at perhaps finding another firm to be able to maintain a certain amount of independence and the willingness of an auditing firm to be able to give the city manager and provide the public a true arms-length candid report that we can feel has been thorough in vetting many of the issues that I brought before you. Thank you very much.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move 5C.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Menuchyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, please. Next is Oral Communications, and this is the portion reserved for three-minute event announcements.
Okay, Andy Najarian, followed by Leon Mayer.
Greetings, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, Staff, and Community Members. On Wednesday, May 30th, at 7:00 PM, I have partnered up with the Der Parsagian Law Group and Document Preparation Solutions to host Teenagers in the Law, a free community forum. Attorney Mary Der Parsagian will cover topics such as curfew laws, student rights, drugs, emancipation, and more. The event will be held at St. Mary's Armenian Church on 500 South Central Avenue. It starts at 7:00 PM, and it is open to the public. Again, admission is free. Thank you, and I hope to see everyone there.
Thank you. Leon Mayer. Now, before Leon Mayer speaks, I have something to present him, and I want to say a few words about Mr. Mayor. He was my nominee through the county of Los Angeles, and he did receive the award, so to speak. For the past 12 years, Leon has dedicated much of his time to bringing Pulitzer Prize-winning authors, influential artists, and actors, and other dignitaries to the city of Glendale through a monthly lecture series at the Glendale Public Library. With his persuasive personality and enthusiasm for library programming, Leon has attracted the likes of Vincent Pugliosi, John Wooden, Jane Fonda, and Ernest Borgnine. At every opportunity, Leon tirelessly promotes his programs throughout the community, including giving presentations at weekly city council meetings. Without a doubt, his attendance at over 500 televised council meetings on behalf of his programming has attracted people to the events and brought prominence to library services. As a community volunteer, Leon is a true champion of literacy, reading, and learning. The Honorable Frank Quintero, Mayor of Glendale, is pleased to nominate Leon Mayer for the 2012 Older Americans Recognition Day Awards Program. Over the last 25 years, Leon has served on the boards of the Friends of the Library, the Glendale Association for the Retarded, the Glendale Human Relations Coalition, and the Kiwanis Club of Glendale, and much more than that. I know that for a fact. I have a commendation that I signed, and not getting any younger somewhere in my office, so I'll have to get back to you on the mayor of Glendale's commendation, but you have one from Mike Antonovich, the supervisor from the county of Los Angeles for the 47th Annual Older Americans Recognition Day, and there's a little kite that says, "Never Too Old to Play." Leon Mayer, in recognition of outstanding volunteer service rendered to the community by sharing your ability, mature knowledge, and vast experience, and given freely of your time and energy, the wealthy heritage of your service enriches the entire community. All right, you have your three minutes.
Well, congratulations. Was this a surprise to you tonight? It was a surprise to me. You look surprised.
Yeah, you can't say a word.
First, this is a first.
I had a hunch.
It is well-deserved. It's always a pleasure to see you here each and every week. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor Quintero. I appreciate getting the nomination. Actually, it wasn't hard work. I enjoyed every minute of what I've done over these years, and I enjoyed the fact that it's helped the city of Glendale in our quest for being a real, live community that interacts to all groups in all areas of our daily living. So, I really appreciate this, and I'll cherish it. Now, I'll take two minutes for my announcements tonight. First of all, as a heads up to Thursday's, May 31st, event at the library, we're having Rosemary Hartunian Cohen, who is going to talk about her book in English lecture, "The Mother of Jerusalem is Crying." And this is a book that talks about the lives of three families in Jerusalem, a Christian family, a Muslim family, and a Jewish family. And it's interesting that Rosemary Hartunian, an Armenian, was married and is married to Mr. Cohen. And it's a great book, and it should be very interesting, and I urge everybody to try to make that event at the library at 7:30 this Thursday. Now, on the lighter side, on the 20th of June, we're going to have Gustavo Aralano come to the library. And Gustavo is a nationally known writer and commentator, radio commentator, and the name of his book is Taco USA: How Mexican Food Conquered America. And that'll be a very interesting event, and Mr. Aralano has a way of really getting the interest of everybody who's in attendance at any of his events. So, that'll be June 20th, 7:00, and we urge everybody to consider coming to that event as well. And that's it. I've used my two minutes. I have flyers that I haven't given out yet. Raise your hand if you haven't got these flyers yet. And again, thanks, Mr. Quintero, Mayor Quintero, for your nomination, and I'd like to thank the members of the city council for your patience and for your encouragement in all I've done over the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know what? I'm going to, I knew when we were, I'll take the mayor's prerogative, city council comments, I knew there was something. I had forgotten something I had attended, and I attended a special presentation at the Adult Recreation Center. Once again, Mr. Ochoa was there. It was amazing. It was a presentation for some of the citizens over 90, and so I gave them little commendations and so forth. And there were also two women there who were 100, over 100, 102, I believe, both of them were 102. But I was just amazed at the 90-year-old and those 202, how clear they were, how sort of attractive they looked. It was just something to behold. And in fact, the entire Adult Rec Center is just fantastic. There are people there lifting weights in the gym, shooting pool, hanging out, playing backgammon, very inspiring when you go there. But it's obvious that the staff members that work there, you can tell they really enjoy their jobs. I mean, you can see how they get a kick out of the older people, how they interact with them, and it was just a very, very positive experience, so.
Mr. Mayor, I've gone to that many times. Doesn't it make you feel young?
Yeah, oh yeah. Are you kidding? Just a very young kid there. But that's what was so amazing about, incidentally, an awful lot of women, not that many men, in the over-90 category.
That's true.
By the way, but it was just amazing. I mean, these women who are 93, there were two friends, two old friends, 93-years-old, and they put me down for sort of a, I would have said, I don't know, their 70s or, just very sharp, very, very sharp people there.
We had one man who was two weeks away from his 100th birthday.
Very good.
And he addressed the crowd of 300.
Very good, very good. So, there's help, there's hope for Mr. Weaver, then.
I've got 20, 30 years left.
All right, thank you very much. Next, please.
Next, under action items, 8A is Director of Human Resources and Director of Finance Regarding Public Agency Retirement Service, PARs Supplementary Retirement Plan, SRP, for eligible employees. 8A1 is a resolution of the city of Glendale approving the SRP.
Ochoa?
Yes, sir. We will be presenting to you a report that details something that has been discussed previously in the context of our budget study sessions. Looking down the barrel of a $15.4 million general fund deficit and knowing that at this point, given the good work of the council and staff to reduce costs by rolling back benefits for the employee population, cutting back on CIP, cutting back on MOU or MNO, the remaining areas to cut are ostensibly staffing and staffing levels. Under our civil service system, the layoff mechanism that we have with bumping rights that spread throughout the organization and not by department or by fund or by bargaining group, that creates a recipe for diminished service beyond the scope of the cuts that we would be dealing with. At the same time, given the demographics of our organization, having folks basically bump down and eliminate the, in essence, our farm team, the younger newly hired employees, and knowing that because of the demographics and the baby boomers that will be leaving our organization in the next two to four years, that would basically remove the upper echelon of institutional memory and the best parts of our leadership cadre and our talent pipeline, the best way for us, the most intelligent strategic way for us to make these cuts, is to do so by accelerated attrition. And thus, we have this retirement incentive benefit before you. With that, I'll ask Mr. Doyle to give you a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is a resolution approving a supplementary retirement plan offered by PARs. This program is being offered as a means of substantially reducing the size of the city's workforce by increasing and accelerating the retirement rate over and above the natural attrition rate. Staff explored several retirement incentive programs and settled on a plan offered by PARs. This is an organization, private organization, public agency, retirement services. This program will offer an annuity equivalent of 5% of the employee's current base salary, which will be paid out monthly over the course of the lifetime of the employee or through shorter terms. There are as many as 14 different options for the employee to consider in choosing this plan. The eligibility for this plan will be to salaried employees who are eligible to retire through PARs, excuse me, through PERS. That means a minimum age of 50 or above, and an individual would have to have at least five years of service time in the PERS system. Those excluded from this plan would be executives, sworn police, sworn fire, our yard, Glendale Water and Power yard employees, several employees, civilian employees of the police department, including those in our custody section, records, communications, as well as in our fire departments, non-sworn employees in the dispatch area, as well as the inspection area. We anticipate broad acceptance of this plan. Earlier this month, we did a survey of all the eligible employees who may be considered for this within the parameters I just read. Approximately 390 eligible employees. We had a total of 70 firm yeses as far as individuals who would be willing to take this, and another 70, approximately another 70, who are strongly considering taking the program. If this is approved, PARs will immediately begin the process of outreach to those eligible employees, which means they'll be doing a direct mailing of all the information to those employees. In addition to that, they'll be having orientation workshops here at the city work site, as well as my staff will be working with employees, answering their questions, and doing counseling relative to retirement. The timeline for this program, should the council approve this tonight, would be essentially May 30th through July 6th. It's about a six, a five-to-six-week period of time where the employee would be expected to commit to the plan. Following that, there is an area, it's called a post-enrollment analysis, where PARs will look at the number of people who have taken consideration of this program and bringing those numbers back to us in case it's still, to make sure that it still does meet our objectives. Following that, the post-enrollment analysis, if the plan does proceed at that point, we would require a retirement no later than August 31st of 2012. This entire program is predicated on obviously getting a number of employees participating in the program, and additionally, once those employees have vacated the position, our internal procedure for determining whether or not to fill those positions. Our objective in this program is to fill no more than one in five of the vacated positions, essentially 20%. The staff report indicated, and the information we've gotten from the PARs organization would show that we begin to break even as far as actual saving money by replacing 75% to 80% of those positions. So, our objective is to go much lower than that and only fill 20% of those. Obviously, the savings from this program will be an ongoing basis, looking at the salaries of those employees who take it, as well as the benefit load, and of course, calculating that against the cost of the plan. So, with that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions. Bob Elliott is here as well, if you have questions on the financing of it and anything along those lines. And we have two representatives from PARs here tonight, Mr. Mitch Barker and Eric O'Leary. They are just behind me here, so if you have any questions, be happy to try and answer them.
Questions from the council? Okay, I have two speaker cards. Herbert Milano, followed by Mike Mulhill.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council and staff, my name is Herbert Milano. I'd like to present to you a different point of view with regard to the approach that the city may be taking, that in my opinion, may be the expensive way to go, to do what is definitely necessary to reduce the number of full-time employees in the city of Glendale. I think that the public should know how many employees, full-time employees, were in the city of Glendale's employment when we had an equivalent, the last time we had a measure of the equivalent number of residents. If we're now at approximately 192,000 residents, what were the number of full-time employees back then? I think we'd have to go back to 1998. Since that time, even though the population is the same, you know, given that 12-period span, we have increased the number of employees by hundreds, hundreds. And I think it behooves the city to basically say, "Look, where do we have the extra employees and the additional number of middle managers primarily that were hired during that period of time?" I think that when you give this kind of incentive, you're actually losing your best employees, your most experienced employees. Is that really what you want to do? You're basically going to give an incentive to the individuals who have the longest experience and the individuals who may very well, who are the highest skilled, who are going to take that money and basically move someplace else. I think that you may need to revisit this issue. In 2005, the city council gave an increase to the pension system of 25% to non-safety employees. That is part of the reason why the city's budget is in such incredible constraint. And now, we're going to be saying, "Look, there's going to be very little pain to all of you. We're just going to give you an additional incentive." Now, I'm looking at this because I experienced, and I've seen so many individuals who are not in government, who did not get any of these type of benefits, especially after getting such a significant benefit back in 2005. I think that furloughs may be an approach, and I think that maybe the city council should revisit how you have structured the, what we conduct here in the city with civil service that does not allow for the proper reduction in staff when the economy goes down. I think that we really need to reinstitute again how we hire individuals for hourly positions, how we maintain the minimal amount of staff, and how to make sure that if you increase and create a good strategic plan, that you can actually forecast the staffing needed for the future. You've now reduced CIP, meaning that there's lots of projects that are not of projects that are not being done, and yet, what we're doing with many of these employees is basically moving them into operations. So, now that you don't increase capital improvement, you still keep those employees. I think that needs revisiting. Thank you very much.
Mike MoHill.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members in the viewing audience. You know, I made a, I made a poor decision years ago. It was either silver service or private industry. I chose private industry. I remember there were, to be in civil service was not good. You'd make a lot of money. You were given stability and a good pension when you, time to retire. But over the past 15 years, the city council and other city councils throughout this country has been bought and sold by the unions, and all four of the five people here on council tonight are beholden to the five, to the four or five unions we have today. Is that fair to the ratepayers, who have to have increase in water rates to pay for these salaries and benefits? You know, last in, last hired first fired. That's the union way of doing things. It's not my way of doing things. We have a lot of good employees, and we're going to let them go. We should cherry pick, we should cherry pick, pick, excuse me, the employees who are good, and like in private industry, the workers who are not good, let the supervisors say, "You know what? These individuals should be laid off first." Let's run this city like a private industry, not like a government job, because a government job only benefits the employees and not the ratepayers. And this goes on throughout this nation. I'm reading right now Hostess Cakes is in bankruptcy, you know, Twinkies, because their biggest problem is labor, and they have unions they have to contend with. The unions are driving this country into bankruptcy, and we're part of that problem. Is the city council going to take this issue back and tell senior staff, "Let's address the pension situation, salary situation"? This has to benefit the ratepayers and not the city employees. They've been given through the years generous salaries and generous pensions, but in private industry, nobody gets this type of severance pay, 30 days, severance pay, 90 days, maybe 12 months, maybe. But this is two years. How much more do you want us to give them? We're all on social security. The most we can get is $30,000 a year if we're Bill Gates. The average social security recipient is $14,745 a year. That's the average. And these people will be getting much more than that. Thank you.
Harry Zavos.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm a citizen of Glendale. And on this subject of how the city saves money with respect to employee costs, something really concerned me and confused me at the last GWP commission meeting. At that meeting, Mr. Steiger indicated that without an electrical increase in rates, that the, they would have to have a zero capital improvement program, and critical capital improvements would have to be deferred. And then he explained, under those circumstances, it will affect the maintenance and operation part of the GWP. It'll increase those costs. And Mr. Yao, I believe, was the one that asked, "Why is that so? Is that because there would have to be more repairs to keep the system going?" Mr. Steiger replied, "No, that's not why, but it's because there'll be no work for those people who are presently on the capital improvement side of GWP, and we'll have to move them over to maintenance and operations to pay their salary." Now, that sounded to me awfully like a make-work project, and I would hope that would not be the policy of this council, is to take personnel who have no work to do in their part of the utility, capital improvements, and move them over to maintenance and operation budget to continue to give them a salary, given the dire financial situation in which the city finds itself.
Okay, any, that's final card.
Comments from?
Emotion?
Like emotion?
Move 8A1.
Other comments?
All right, well, let me say I'm in favor of this. I think it's, would make sense in terms of how to try to get to a more efficient delivery of city services, be of minimal cost to the, to the city, and absolutely minimal disruption. So, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukin?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Eric Quintero?
Yes.
Next. Next, we return to the oral communications, where discussion is limited time, is not part of this agenda. Any speakers allowed five minutes. Counsel, make question and response to speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. And City Manager Mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Herbert Milano, followed by Mike MoHill.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the city council and city staff. I'm going to try to stay away from the agenda items that were covered today, which in effect have a tangential relation to the, to the overall city's budget. This coming month in June, you're going to be making a decision with regard to the direction that the city's going to take. I believe that the budget study session started off on the right foot. I believe that it's beginning to address some of the long-term implications that the city will be facing with regard to where you have to cut. But I'm really troubled about the manner in which the city is addressing the shortfall. I believe that you need to address the trends that have occurred since roughly Mr. Jim Starbird came into office. I don't have the charts with me. I'll be coming again in the future to show those graphs. I have mentioned to you that the increases in salaries alone, compensation, have increased at an exponential rate. Even though many years ago, I should say presented and gave a warning of those trends, that they are unsustainable. They're unsustainable primarily because the economy is not steady. Economies improve, and economies eventually have some type of downturn. You know, in an international world, you're going to find situations where you're going to find either shortage of petroleum, wars, situations with, that are beyond the control of the, of the national government, and beyond the control of our own initiatives that we can take. And where you assign and put us into a position where you lock in significantly increases in pay, and after that, you lock us in into a significant increases on the pension obligation, it gives no room for any type of economic downturn. So, the country's economy sneezes, and we catch pneumonia. I really believe that the city needs to reassess, perhaps after this particular budget, and figure out, you know, multiple sessions that are days long, to figure out how to change the strategy of the city, to basically make a structural change in the way that the budgets are assessed and created. It is an affront to me to find out that the capital improvements are basically now down to zero, and the effects that we see visually. We see it on the roads. The roads in many areas of the city are crumbling, you know, and that's visually what we are able to see ourselves. It takes in this city roughly 12 years to, from the idea of a park, to get something done. 12 years. It took 12 years to get Central Park. It took 12 years to get Adam Square. It takes something like 12 years to get sidewalk repaired, and now, it's going to take decades to get some of these roads repaired. You know, there's some areas in capital improvement that are absolutely necessary and easy to compute. We have 360 miles of roadway. There roughly, on average, is your roadway lasts about 20 years or less, depending on the traffic. And yet, we only reconstruct two miles, three mile stops consistently during the past. We do slurry seal, but that's just makeup. The underground water mains, the valves, all the infrastructure of the Glendale Water and Power that hasn't been maintained, the rest of the infrastructure that isn't maintained, because the bulk of the monetary extraction has been given in pay increases, significant amount of overtime, pay spiking at the last year before they retire, disability insurance for individuals that we cannot figure out, you know, to validate and claim it. The numbers are in the hundreds of millions of dollars more per year than we were spending just 10 years ago. And we cannot then afford to do the things that are needed to maintain a community that is truly viable with adequate parkland, with adequate sidewalks, with attention to, to traffic flow. We don't have the funds to do that, and yet, when I look at the list of individuals in retirement, now, 91 of them with over, you know, $100,000 in earnings in retirement, it's atrocious, $180,000. We cannot continue that way. We need to restructure this whole process, because it's unsustainable. At the end of the day, it shows up in our lower quality of life. Thank you.
Mike MoHill, followed by Harry Zavos.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members in the viewing audience. My name is Mike MoHill. As recently reported in the Glendale News Press, former city manager Jim Starbird had a closed-door meeting in fall 2010 with city council members and the senior staff, a meeting which may have been a violation of the Brown Act, because the subject matter was never agendized and posted for the public to see. In 2010, Mr. Drayman informed city manager Starbird that work was being performed on his condo. After investigating Drayman's claim, Mr. Starbird never found any building permits. In the fall 2010, during a closed-door meeting, Starbird gave the city council a court-receiver presentation that raised concern that some council members may have received illegal construction work from ADI, a public housing company presently under federal investigation for fraud. After the meeting, Mr. Drayman fessed up to Mr. Starbird. In time, Mr. Starbird said the situation between Drayman and a contractual issue for a remodeled condo was much more than a convoluted, simple contract with National Fire, a subcontractor for ADI. In 2009, member Friedman, Najarian, Quintero received thousands of dollars in campaign money from the subcontractors of ADI. Then they all acted as if they did not know who these subcontractors were, as they cashed their checks on the way to the bank. Additionally, not only did Mr. Drayman receive reported $200,000 condo makeover, but he also received in May 2007, campaign contribution of about $9,000 and some of the, from some of the same contractors that Friedman, Najarian, and Quintero received from in April 2009. By January 2011, council members Friedman, Najarian, Quintero, and Weaver all knew Mr. Drayman illegal, non-permitted condo remodel. In March 2011, council members were presented inside condo pictures. Drayman and Weaver said the pictures were in the common area of the condo complex, which was not true. Also in the know were city manager Starbird, Assistant City Attorney, Assistant, sorry, city manager, Mr. McFaul, city attorney Howard, and Assistant City Attorney Garcia. Council members Drayman, Freeman, Najarian, Quintero approved over $30 million in public housing money for ADI. In testimony, Mr. Starbird said the good friend, his good friend, John Drayman, was one of the biggest cheerleaders for ADI. Why in January 2011 would John Mohler, a friend of developer Mark Nathanson, loan John Drayman $100,000 when it was already reported that Drayman was unable to secure a bank loan? Or did someone provide collateral for that loan? Who was guaranteeing the loan if Mr. Drayman was to default? What would smart people, businessmen like Mark Nathanson and Rodney Kahn, be gaining by securing loans for John Drayman? Councilman Drayman was an ardent supporter of, of the project submitted by Mark Nathanson, including the Lemley Theater and a six-story apartment complex which, which received parking concessions last year worth over millions of dollars. Because council members had also benefited from the subcontractors of ADI, was the reason you all chose not to inform, excuse me, inform the public of Mr. Drayman and his deceptions, not taking out building permits on his condo after he was caught? This information would have been most relevant during the April 2011 election. In my opinion, your silence, your silence now and since 2010, has become very revealing of your character, your values, and your disrespect for the rule of law. Respectfully, now council members Freeman, Najarian, and Quintero, and Mr. Weaver all appear as co-conspirators and defrauding the city and the voters who elected them into office. Council members, your disinterest in the Drayman scandal cannot help but make one wonder, is this business as usual? Finally, I would like to thank the Glendale Police Department for the dedicated performance in getting to the bottom of the Drayman affair and restoring the public trust. Thank you. My name is Mike MoHill.
Harry Zavos.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm a resident of Glendale. In perfecting a version of a flow chart, which I supplied to the city manager, intended to show that charter-authorized transfers from the electoral courts to the general fund could not be a budgeted GWP item, I had occasion to look more closely at the sections that are part of Article 11 of the Glendale Constitution. And to my surprise, it appears that those provisions conflict with the city's procedure regarding those transfers. And let me indicate why. I begin with Section 14 and read a portion of it, which establishes the General Budget Fund. A fund to be known as a General Budget Fund is hereby created. All receipts from the general tax levy, license fees, permits, and interest on bank deposits, and all other receipts except those from the Department of Water and Power shall be credited to such fund. So, Section 14 indicates that GWP funds do not go into the General Budget Fund. But the city relies on Section 22 for the transfers. And I read now from the relevant portion of that section. An amount equal to 25 percentum of the operating revenues of the Department of Water and Power shall be transferred to, notice, not the General Budget Fund, shall be transferred to the General Reserve Fund. And what is the General Reserve Fund? Well, that appears in Section 15, and I read portions of Section 15. The council shall maintain the permanent revolving fund now established and known as a General Reserve Fund for the purpose of keeping the payment of the running expenses of the city on a cash basis. Such fund shall be maintained in an amount sufficient to meet all legal demands against the Treasury for the period of each fiscal year prior to the collection of ad valorem taxes. The council should have the power to transfer from the General Reserve Fund to any fund or funds, such sum or sums as may be required, for the purpose of placing such fund or funds as nearly as possible on a cash basis. And please note this next sentence. It shall be the duty of the city council to provide that all money so transferred from the General Reserve Fund the General Reserve Fund be returned thereto on or before the end of the fiscal year in which said transfers are made. It then goes on and indicates, if in that reserve fund there is an excess over and above fifty percent of the estimated ad valorem tax, then nevertheless, the city can use those for what it sees fit. Now, I believe the city, or the people of this city, have a right to know how the city legally transfers a fixed amount of nearly twenty-one million dollars of electrical fees from the Electrical Revenue Fund directly to the General Budget Fund, without any mention of the General Reserve Fund and without any mention of ad valorem taxes, and the fact that that sum is in excess of fifty percent of the anticipated ad valorem taxes. That's what the section provides. I'd be glad to sit down and walk through it with the city attorney, the city manager, anybody on the council. It seems to me that what the city is doing is against what the charter provides. Now, I believe that, as I say, the public has a right to an explanation consistent with the provisions that I've read to you from the charter. Last week when I was here, I made a prima facie case that any change in the electrical fees or rates, according to Article thirteen C of the state constitution, would require a vote of the people. I indicated, based on that prima facie case, the city attorney should pervade, provide a legal opinion on that issue and provide it to the public well before such a rate increase, so the public would have an opportunity to study it carefully. The city attorney, as I recall, responded by saying he would supply a copy to the City Council, but he did not say he would supply one to the public. Now, I think the public has a right to that. I understand the city attorney might say, "Well, wait a minute. I'm an attorney for the council, and so I don't have to release it." But that's a good argument to make the city attorney a charter-elected official, answerable to the people who pay his salary. Thank you.
Any comments?
It's laughable if you go to the city of Los Angeles where Mr. Milano lives, they can't even fill their potholes, and they're even thinking of charging the homeowners to fix the sidewalks in front of their homes. Imagine if we tried to do that in Glendale. I wonder how many tripping falls they have in the city of L.A. As far as Mr. Moehl dragging me into it with a conspiracy, take your evidence to the district attorney. I've said that so many times, I'm wasting my breath. Conspiracy, conspiracy, in your mind. And as far as Zavos, city attorney is working on it. You don't need to come down here every week and tell us the same thing when we have the city attorney working on it. Let, let him do his job. He's not going to hide it. It's not going to be a confidential report to us. It'll be out there, right? Are you going to make it confidential?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my initial report memorandum will be confidential to the council, to the council whether or not to release it. And obviously, there'll be a discussion of the legal principles when that electric rate increase comes back to the council, and that'll, that will happen, obviously, in public sector.
So, ultimately, it will come?
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, it's, the council holds privilege, so the council always has the authority to waive it in certain circumstances when it sees fit.
Mr. Manukin?
Will that opinion be provided to the council well ahead of the?
Yes.
Because that's what I think is important.
And I agree, and yeah, the answer is yes.
All right, then that's fine. On, on a different note, I think yesterday, as I was attending these memorial events, an individual came up to me, talked about, now that you're then our GWP director, talked to me about, about electricity and, and our ability to provide electricity to the community. And he mentioned the power plants at San Onofre being shut down, and considering that it's twenty-four hundred megawatt, if I'm not mistaken, that is being taken off the grid, are we prepared, and you don't have to answer this right now, but I think it's certainly a valid question, and considering that we had a warm winter and we are expecting to have a fairly warm summer, are we prepared with, with our generation capacity to deal with any shortages that we might run across this summer? And if we're not, I think it's something that the city manager and, and the management of the city should certainly be prepared for and look into, so.
San Onofre has percolated through the commission and into the staff. We will be providing that update to you.
Well, the grid for the western? Want the grid for the western part of the United States be adjusted to handle that decrease?
Correct. And San Diego, gas and electric depends heavily on San Onofre, so they're the ones that are really going to be in the pinch. It will likely drive spot market rates up for the rest of the different fuel types, but, but staff is prepared and has been anticipating this, so we'd gladly report back to you.
Any other comments? I have a motion.
Move.
Second. We are adjourned.